Mr. Chairman, I would like to thank the Philippines National Assembly and the team of the president and members of this August body.
Please stand before the seat in the Philippines National Assembly and the team of the president.
Plead us bow our heads and feel the presence of the Lord. In the name of the Father, and of His Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen. Captain Lee Father, we come before you today as members of this Andoniang Lalawigan, acknowledging your sovereign and grace with sacred blessing upon these legitimate proceedings that it be guided by fraud, justice, and compassion. Grant us the wisdom to deliver it in matters of importance with wholeness and impartiality. Help us to listen attentively, speak with clarity, and understand one another's viewpoint. May our organization be guided by the principles of good governance and the welfare of our few citizens. Strengthen us with unity and collaboration that we may be effective instruments of positive change. We entrust this gathering to your divine care and your holy name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, and of His Son, and of the Holy Spirit, amen.
On Earth of Abayan, ang pambansang awit ng Pilipinas. Ayam magigil, talasang sila alam, palam ng kuso, sanitik poikun. Ay, lu panginirang, wera ng magiting, sa manlurupin, tikapasisi din. Sanagadat, tukob sa simuwan, sananik opo raw. Ay, hinagam, tulakaw, isa, pagkayam, bigam, malar. Ang isakap, atawat, wera tung, ay karanatininin. Ang itungin, atarot, yakayda, ang haydi, magiginin. Luhanat, orau nga, war, habik, patsikka, wera ngabik, sa mirin ko. Ang ibigaya, na kar, kayo ngabik, ang mamaykayda, ang kanyusayon. Tikan, mga nor, dihanon, pasan, toray, mama, iba, balon. Tugob kita, siyong pangraw, sanakan, an, diyos gaon. Ang sarayu, pagnurutong kita, kabubuwas, unkat, tanta. Amay, iro, i, bagaong, larong, sa kabulog, birinong, padahon. Mangadungin kita, ni suboroy, o sayon, ako, namaliro. Napuop kita, sa karamasan, o hinglapan ka, osdaga. Ang sarayu, pagnurutong kita, kabubuwas, unkat, tanta. Amay, iro, i, bagaong, larong, sa kahulog, birinong, padahon. Amay, iro, i, bagaong, larong, sa kahulog, birinong, padahon. Amay, iro, i, bagaong, larong, sa kahulog, birinong, padahon.
Thank you. Please take your seats. As the secretary, kindly call the role of the members of this august body. Present.
Honorable Abalon, honorable Dubongo, honorable Cedera, honorable Galit, honorable Gilyama, honorable Laudenyo, honorable Lion, honorable Lucero, honorable Miranda, honorable Saldana, honorable Silvano, honorable Sazon, honorable Uwi.
Present.
There are twelve members present including the presiding officer.
With the presence of twelve members of this august body including the presiding officer, we have a quorum in today's regular session. Majority read.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. Good afternoon to our esteemed colleagues. Mr. Chair, under item number six is the consideration of the Journal of November 22, 2024 Regular Session. Mr. Chair, I move to dispense with the reading of the Journal of November 22, 2024 Regular Session and consider the same as approved. So move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal of the November 22, 2024 Regular Session and consider the same as approved. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move for the consideration of item number seven, first reading and referral to committees of proposed ordinances, resolutions, measures, communications, petitions, and memoranda, and kindly direct the secretary to read one item for referral.
As the secretary, kindly read, kindly read the item under agenda number seven.
Resolution Number 24-811 of the Lalawigan and Timog Dabaw entitled, Resolution Requesting the Department of Budget and Management (DBM) through Secretary Amina F. Pangandaman to reconsider a certain provision enshrined in DBM Local Circular Number 160 by changing the retroactive effect of the salary increase of local government officials and employees from August 02, 2024 to January 01, 2024 for reasons as herein stated.
The Resolution Number 24-811 of the Lalawigan and Timog Dabaw, entitled, Resolution Requesting the DBM through Secretary Pangandaman to reconsider a certain provision enshrained in DBM Local Circular Number 160 by changing the retroactive effect of the salary increase of LGU officials and employees from August 2, 2024 to January 1, 2024. The same is for the information and proper guidance of this august body.
Mr. Chairman, under item number eight, Calendar of Business 8-A, second reading, I move, Mr. Chairman, for the consideration of the proposed ordinance sponsored by the Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon M.D. and Honorable Albert A. Lucero and co-sponsored by the Honorable Herardo Gerard A. Miranda entitled, An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Mental Health Care Services in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar, Establishing Mechanisms and Guidelines for Its Implementation, Adapting Certain Provisions of Republic Act Number 11036, and Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes. Mr. Chairman, the parliamentary status of the measure is that this is under the sponsorship and debate. Kindly recognize, Mr. Chair, the main sponsor, the Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon M.D. Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon, Mr. Chair, recognize.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, my dear colleagues. I rise before you today on a matter of privilege to secure your support for the passage of a post-ordinance sponsored by this presentation and Honorable Albert A. Lucero and co-sponsored by Honorable Herardo Gerard Miranda. Entitled, An Ordinance Institutionalizing the Mental Health Care Services in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar, Establishing Mechanisms and Guidelines for Its Implementation, Adapting Certain Provision of the Republic Act 11036, Appropriating Funds Therefore and for Other Purposes. The proposed ordinance was crafted in faithful compliance to the provision of 1987 Constitution which declares that the state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. Further, the proposed ordinance reinforces the pertinent provision with the Local Government Code of 1991, the Mental Health Act of 2018, the Universal Health Care Act of 2018, and the newly signed law, the Basic Education Mental Health and Wellbeing Promotion Act or Republic Act 12080, principally authored by our own Second District Congressman, Honorable Haris Christopher Ongchuan. The apparent increase of suicide cases in the recent years, especially among our young Noratanons, calls for an immediate intervention and a multi-sectoral approach to address the mental health issues. The provincial government of Northern Samar, cognizant of the rule of peer support groups in strengthening the psychosocial and mental well-being among the youth, recognizes the right of peer support to organize themselves, to have access to the mechanism and resources in support of effort to improve their service for the communities and shall provide access to the opportunities for their professional development. Into this brachograph, this ordinance was initiated. Finally, Mr. Chairman, the enactment of this proposed ordinance is mandated by the Seal of Good Local Government Act of 2019 which directs local government units to effectively implement and deliver health care services and information system as well as to pursue the evidence-based health promotion protection policies scientifically proven and accepted advanced population health and individual well-being. For SGLG 2025 Assessment Criteria for the Province, localization of mental health law is included as one of the required health promotion policies and program to be enacted before December 31, 2024. Thank you very much, and with that, Mr. Chair, I am now ready to entertain question, comments, interpretation from any member of this august body. I submit, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon. Few minutes suspension, Mr. Chair.
Sessions suspended. Next, uh, 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 interpolation? Okay. It's... Session resumes.
Majority Leader. Mr. Chairman, with the indulgence of the sponsor, if we can move the period of debate to our session until our next session.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I submit to the request of the Majority Floor Leader.
I therefore move, Mr. Chair, that we schedule the period of interpolation of this proposed ordinance on our next session.
With that motion, duly seconded, the period of interpolation for this proposed ordinance is hereby scheduled in our next, uh, session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, still under second reading, I move for the consideration of the proposed ordinance sponsored by the Honorable Albert A. Lucero and Honorable Gilbert F. Lion M.D., entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Use, Sale, Distribution, and Advertisement of Cigarettes and Other Tobacco Products, Electronic Nicotine and Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems, Heated Tobacco Products, and other, and other novel tobacco products in certain places, imposing penalties for violations thereof, and providing funds therefore to instill health consciousness and for other purposes." The parliamentary status of the measure, Mr. Chairman, is this, is that this is under sponsorship and debate. Kindly recognize the main sponsor, Mr. Chair, the Honorable Albert A. Lucero.
Honorable Albert A. Lucero, Mr. Recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Mr. Presiding Officer, dear colleagues. I rise before you today on a matter of personal as well as collective privilege to secure your one-hundred percent support for the passage of the proposed ordinance sponsored by this representation and Honorable Doc Jing Lion, entitled, "An Ordinance Regulating the Use, Sale, Distribution, and Advertisement of Cigarettes and Other Tobacco Products, Electronic Nicotine and Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems, Heated Tobacco Products and Other Novel Tobacco Products in Certain Places, imposing penalties for violations thereof, and providing funds therefore to instill health consciousness and for other purposes." The proposed ordinance faithfully complies with the provisions of nineteen-eighty-seven Constitution which declares that the state shall protect and promote the right to health of the people and instill health consciousness among them. Further, the proposed ordinance reinforces the pertinent provisions of the Local Government Code of nineteen-ninety-one, Republic Act seventy-one-sixty, Philippine Clean Air Act of nineteen-ninety-nine, the Tobacco Regulation Act of two thousand three, the Universal Healthcare Act of twenty-nineteen, the Public Act Number One-O-six, Series of twenty-twenty, amended Executive Order Number Twenty-six, Series of twenty-seventeen, Civil Service Commission Circular Number Seventeen, Series Twenty-Ten, Twenty-O-nine, Civil Service Department of Health Joint Memorandum Circular Number Twenty-Ten dash Zero-One, and Civil Service Commission Memorandum Circular Number Seventeen, Series of twenty-O-nine, which laid down policies, policy guidelines regulating smoking. Finally, Mr. Chairman, we enactment of the proposed ordinance mandated by the Seal of Good Local Governance Act of twenty-nineteen, this Republic Act One-One-Two-Nine-Two, which directs the local government units to effectively implement and deliver health services and information systems as well as pursue evidence-based health promotion and protection policies scientifically proven and accepted to advance population health and individual well-being. One of the indicators for this measurement is strict enforcement of laws and ordinances that regulate tobacco sale and use. For SGLG twenty-twenty-five, Mr. Chairman, Assessment Criteria for Provinces, Tobacco and Vape Control is included as one of the required health promotion policies and programs to be enacted as of December thirty-one, twenty-twenty-four. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and with that, Mr. Chairman, I am now ready to entertain questions, comments, and interpolations for any member of this august body. I submit, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman, again, if the sponsor would agree that we schedule the period of interpolation of this proposed ordinance on our next scheduled session.
Mr. Chairman, this presentation is very much willing to entertain questions, comments, and manifestations relative to this proposed ordinance in the next session, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, sponsor. I move, I therefore move, Mr. Chair, that we schedule the continuation of the consideration of the proposed ordinance under second reading on our next session. So move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, duly seconded, the period for interpolation debate for the proposed ordinance is hereby, uh, scheduled in our next, uh, session.
Mr. Chairman, under item number eight dash B, Review of Municipal Ordinances and Resolutions, kindly recognize the good chair of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, the Honorable Don El Abalon.
Honorable Don El Abalon, Mr. Recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For and in behalf of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, uh, we will be rendering our committee reports one, two, on eleven items, as we will be requesting for the deferment of three items in the agenda, Mr. Chair. And, uh, with that, may I request that the secretary be directed to incorporate into the journal and the records of these proceedings the committee report for the following, the committee reports for the following items. Appropriation Ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash zero-six of the Municipality of Gamay, Municipal Ordinance Number Eleven dash Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Lapinig, Ordinance Number Fifteen, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Resolution Number Fifty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Seventy-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Eighty-two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number One-One-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Roque, Resolution Number Sixty-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Municipal Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash forty-six of the Municipality of San Antonio, Resolution Number Two-Four-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria, and Resolution Number Two-Four-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria, and at the same time, may we request for the deferment of the considerations of the following items. Resolution Number Sixty, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash zero-five-seven, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Isidro, and Resolution Number Two-Four-Four, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria. I so move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, duly seconded, S.P. Secretary kindly incorporate in the journals of today's session the respective committee reports of those items as mentioned by the chairman of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, a total of eleven, eleven uh, items, committee reports, and the deferment of the three uh, committee reports. Resolution Number Sixty, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number uh, Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-four zero-five-seven of the Municipality of San Isidro, and Resolution Number Two-Four-Four, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria and Northern Samar. Hearing no objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and with the incorporation into the records and the journal of these proceedings, the eleven items, and upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash zero-six of the Municipality of Gamay, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution to declare appropriation ordinance Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash zero-six of the Municipality of Gamay, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring the municipal ordinance Number Eleven dash Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Lapinig, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring municipal ordinance Number Eleven dash Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Lapinig, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report as well as those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring ordinance Number Fifteen, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, valid and operative, subject to the conditions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring ordinance Number Fifteen, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Annual Investment Program, AIP, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, and Resolution Number Fifty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Annual Investment Program, AIP, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, and Resolution Number Fifty-five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objections, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Annual Investment Program, AIP, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Seventy-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Annual Investment Program, AIP, for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Seventy-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Second Supplemental Annual Investment Program for, uh, twen- for the year twenty-twenty-four and the Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Eighty-two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Second Supplemental Annual Investment Program, year twenty-twenty-four, and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number Eighty-two, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Las Navas, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the revised Annual Investment Plan, AIP, for calendar year twenty-twenty-five, and the Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number One-One-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Roque, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the revised Annual Investment Plan for calendar year twenty-twenty-five and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number One-One-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Roque, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report as well as those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program for calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Sixty-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program for calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Sixty-nine, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of San Jose, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report as well as those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Annual Investment Plan for calendar year twenty-twenty-five and the municipal Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash forty-six of the Municipality of San Antonio, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Annual Investment Plan for calendar year twenty-twenty-five and municipal Resolution Number Twenty-Twenty-four dash forty-six of the Municipality of San Antonio, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number Zero-Two for calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Two-Four-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number Calendar, uh, Number Zero-Two, calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Two-Four-Five, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria and Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report as well as those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Upon the authority of the committee, may I respectfully move to pass a resolution adopting the committee report and declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number Zero-Three for calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Two-Four-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria, valid and operative, subject to the conditions and provisions mentioned in the committee report and those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion, duly seconded, to pass a resolution declaring both the Supplemental Annual Investment Program Number Zero-Three, calendar year twenty-twenty-four and Resolution Number Two-Four-Six, Series of Twenty-Twenty-four of the Municipality of Victoria, Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to the conditions as stated in the committee report as well as those prescribed by existing laws, rules, and regulations. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all for the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. Majority Leader.
Mr. Chairman, with the adopted committee report of the Committee on Finance, Budget, and Appropriations, I move for the suspension of the rules of the Sanggunian Bayan.
With that motion due to this content, internal rule suspended.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring appropriation ordinance number 2024-06 of the municipality of Gamay this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring the appropriation ordinance number 2024-06 of the municipality of Gamay Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 11-2024 of the municipality of Lapinig this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring municipal ordinance number 11-2024 of the municipality of Lapinig Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance number 15, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring ordinance number 15, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment program, AIP, for calendar year 2025 and the resolution number 55, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment program for calendar year 2025 and resolution number 55, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment program, AIP, for fiscal year 2025 and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 79, series of 2024, of the municipality of Las Navas this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval on final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment program for fiscal year 2025 and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 79, series of 2024, of the municipality of Las Navas Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the second supplemental annual investment program, AIP, for the year 2024, and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 82, series of 2024, of the municipality of Las Navas this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the second supplemental annual investment program, year 2024, and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 82, series of 2024, the municipality of Las Navas Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the revised annual investment plan for calendar year 2025 and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 116, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Roque this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the revised annual investment plan for calendar year 2025 and Sanggunian Bayan Resolution Number 116, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Roque Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program, AIP, for calendar year 2024 and resolution number 69, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program for calendar year 2024 and resolution number 69, series of 2024, of the municipality of San Jose Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment program for calendar year 2025 and municipal resolution number 2024-46 of the municipality of San Antonio this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the annual investment plan for calendar year 2025 and municipal resolution number 2024-46 of the municipality of San Antonio Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program number 2 for calendar year 2024 and resolution number 245, series of 2024, of the municipality of Victoria this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program, number 02, calendar year 2024, and resolution number 245, series of 2024, of the municipality of Victoria Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Sir Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program, number 3, for calendar year 2024, and resolution number 246, series of 2024, of the municipality of Victoria this province, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Some of this, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion due to this content for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring both the supplemental annual investment program, number 03, calendar year 2024, and resolution number 246, series of 2024, of the municipality of Victoria Northern Samar, valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading. Mr. Chairman, for the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, kindly recognize the good Chair, the Honorable Don El Abalán. Honorable Don El Abalán is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For and in behalf of the Committee on Laws, Justice, Human Rights, and Public Accountability, and with the indulgence of the Sanggunian Pala-Lawigan, may we move for the deferment of the rendition of the committee report on municipal ordinance number 631, series of 2024, of the municipality of La Wang. I saw more, Mr. Chair.
With that motion due to this content, the the treatment of the municipal ordinance number 631, series of 2024, of the municipality of La Wang Northern Samar, is hereby deferred to our next scheduled hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalán, Majority.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, for the committee on senior citizens and persons with disabilities, please recognize its good chairperson, the Honorable Yonida Pila-Deney.
Honorable Yonida Pila-Deney is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Majority for our leader. For and in behalf of the Committee on Senior Citizens and Person with Disability, may I have the honor to render our committee report. The Committee on Senior Citizens and Person with Disability, to which was referred ordinance number 19, series of 2024, of the municipality of Allen Northern Samar, entitled Senior Citizens Code of Allen Northern Samar, has considered the same and has the honor to report it back to the Sanggunian Pala-Lawigan with the recommendation that the resolution be passed to declare subject ordinance valid for being consistent with the pertinent provisions of Republic Act number 7432, otherwise known as the Senior Citizens Act, as amended by Republic Act number 9257, otherwise known as the Expanded Senior Citizens Act of 2003, and Republic Act number 994, otherwise known as the Expanded Senior Citizens Act of 2010, except section 50 of the subject ordinance for being ultra varies. The penalties imposed herein exceed what is provided for in section 447 of the Local Government Code of 1991. The fines ranges from 1,500 to 3,000 pesos, but not to exceed 5,000 pesos, provided however that its implementation shall be in accordance with the pertinent provisions of laws, rules, and regulation. Submitted for resolution this 19th day of December 2024. This was approved by all the committee member, Honorable Albert Luzero Member, Honorable Kentin Saludaga Member, Honorable Christian Emmanueloy Member, and Honorable Arturo Dubongo Vice Chair and his representation. I saw more for the adoption of this committee report.
Mr. Chairman, before we adopt the committee report, the Honorable Don Abalán wishes to be recognized.
Honorable Don El Abalán is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the indulgence of the Chairman of the Committee on Senior Citizens and Persons with Disabilities, I would like to raise some points for, points of inquiry, Mr. Chair. For example, on section 50 of the ordinance that was considered as ultra varies, may I ask the Chairman, Mr. Chair, why would the, why would the committee considers this particular provision ultra varies? And may I read the provision, Mr. Chair? Section 50, municipal fines, penalties, exclusivity pursuant to the devolved, developed, I would assume it's devolved powers and authority vested upon local government units by the Local Government Code of 1991. The fines and penalties imposed by the municipal government of Allen for violation of municipal ordinances shall be separate and exclusive of the fines and penalties imposed by the Senior Citizens Act unless otherwise declared by the judicial court or competent authority. So may I inquire from the Chair, from the Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, move for one minute's suspension.
With that motion, session suspended.
Okay, Mr. Chair, for the inquiry of our very good board member from the San Roque, I move that my answer will be on the next session. Some of, Mr. Chair.
With that, with that, Mr. Chair, I just would like to raise certain points now so that the committee can also consider these issues.
Okay.
On, on section 12, Mr. Chair, of the ordinance, and I would like to read qualifications of the head of the OSKA. A qualified senior citizen shall be appointed by the city mayor to head the OSKA, who must possess the following qualifications, as senior merited by section 12. I just would like to inquire from the Chairman of the Committee if Allen is now a city because it already speaks of city in the ordinance, Mr. Chair.
It is very, very clear that Allen is not a city. Board Member Dubongo is with us from Allen. So, again, again, Mr. Chair, for not going so long, we will move for the next session for the other questions.
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Some of, Mr. Chair.
I have no objection with that.
And very clear, very clear, very clear that Allen is not a city. So noted, noted, Mr. Chair. Noted, Mr. Chair.
On chapter 6 of the ordinance, Mr. Chair, is specifically sections 25 and 26. The ordinance prescribed for the creation of a committee for senior citizens affairs in the Sanggunian barangay. Mr. Chair, I submit that this is an encroachment into the authority of the Sanggunian barangay. We have to remember that the municipality, through the municipal mayor, has only a supervisory function over the barangay. It does not have control power. Hence, it cannot direct the barangay, particularly the Sanggunian barangay, on what committee to create within the Sanggunian barangay. We have to understand, Mr. Chair, that that particular authority is vested upon the specific Sanggunian.
Noted, Mr. Chair, for the next session.
Now, on chapter 9, Mr. Chair, on chapter 9, sections 33 and all these discounts, the privileges for senior citizens. May I inquire from the Chairman of the Committee, Mr. Chair, if these privileges, these discounts, are separate and distinct from the discounts that are already prescribed by law?
For my understanding, Mr. Chair, the ordinance of Allen is different from the national, national law. They have a separate privileges, as stated in their ordinance. So, we have to revisit if that ordinance is in line with the law of the national, the senior citizens, the National Commission on Senior Citizens. Noted, Mr. Chair.
Is it my understanding that in addition to the 20% discount granted by national law, a senior citizen in Allen will have an additional 20% discount in accordance with this ordinance, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Chair, very clear, and national law, only 20% and discount on senior citizens. But if Allen has a different ordinance, we will revisit again if it is in this, their adaptation is also in line with the national law of the National Senior Citizens Commission, the NIS.
And on section 34, Mr. Chair, there is a special discount on basic necessities. A discount of 5% on the regular prices of certain basic commodities that are enumerated in section 34. Is that again over and above the 20% that is granted by national law and the additional 20% granted by this ordinance of Allen, Mr. Chair?
To my understanding, Mr. Chair, the 20% is in national law. However, for the commodities, like milk, bread, it is 5%. In some stores, for example, senior citizens, naman, napalitak sa mercury. They have only selected items, sa groceries nga, iiba na nila sin 5%. But the 20% sa mga medicines. But for Allen, we have again to revisit their ordinance, kung talaga nasubay si rasambalaon sa national.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair. Now, on Section 38.
38.
Um, is it my, is my understanding correct that the Sanggunian Bayan of Allen is granting income tax exemption to senior citizens who are, uh, earning, uh, within or below the minimum wage, as contemplated by Section 38? Does the Sanggunian Bayan of Allen have the authority to grant income tax exemption, Mr. Chair?
From my understanding, the granting of income tax, the, uh, sanction of income tax is based on the BIR. And even though if you're a senior citizen, kung may ka talaga income, you have to pay your income tax. For me, for me, I am a senior citizen.
But this particular provision now, Mr. Chair, under Section 38, the ordinance is granting income tax exemption to senior citizens?
Of Allen.
Of Allen. Are they allowed to do that?
For that, we will...
On, uh, well, the committee had already recommended Section 50 to be considered ultra-very, but, and I, I would agree with them insofar as one particular provision here is concerned. On Paragraph D, if the offender is an alien or a foreigner, he shall be deported immediately after service of sentence without further deportation proceedings. Can the Sanggunian Bayan allow that to happen? Allow, has the authority to do that, Mr. Chair? So, uh, since the, the committee will be giving me the answers, next session, Mr. Chair, then I reserve the other questions next session.
Okay, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalón. Uh, thank you, Honorable Yenida Filaudeno. And kindly take note of those sections, particularly Section 12, Sections 25 and 26 of Chapter 6, Sections 33 and 34 of Chapter 9, and Section 38, Chapter 10, among others, and also Section 50. So with the, those comments, manifestations.
Mr. Chair, before we defer consideration of this, uh, committee report, I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session suspended.
Inconsistencies. I have listed 12 gagging question ni, uh, for clarification of being due. So I therefore move to remind the subject ordinance to the original owner of the Allen. To the origin, the Allen, the municipality of Allen. I so move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, any second.
Si, kun na.
Do this counted? The proposed ordinance, the Senior Citizens Code of Allen Northern Samar, uh, is hereby remanded to the Sanggunian Bayan of the said municipality.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Yenida Filaudeno.
Mr. Chairman, with the adopted committee report of the Committee on Senior Citizens and Persons with Disabilities, I move for the suspension of the rules of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan.
With that motion, internal is suspended.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution remanding ordinance number 19, series of 2024 of the Municipality of Allen Northern Samar to, to the Municipality of Allen Northern Samar. So move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, do this counted for the approval and final reading of a resolution remanding the proposed ordinance, the Senior Citizens Code of Allen Northern Samar to the Sanggunian Bayan of the said municipality. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, for the Committee on Energy, Utilities, and Franchises, I do recognize the good Chair of the Committee, the Honorable Quintín B. Saludaga.
Honorable Quintín B. Saludaga is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the Committee on Energy, Utilities, and Franchises, I have two items that to be reported. For Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-253 of Municipality Palapag Northern Samar, entitled an ordinance enacting 2024 traffic flow, rules, and regulations in the Municipality Palapag Northern Samar, and providing penalties for violations thereof. Upon the recommendation of the Committee on Energy, Utilities, and Franchises, chaired by this humble representation, I, we recommend that the resolution be passed to declare the subject ordinance valid and operative or be inconsistent with the general welfare provisions of Local Government Code of 1991. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, do this counted to pass a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-254 of the Municipality Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative, provided that its implementations have been in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations, particularly those rules and regulations which are under the authority of the Land Transportation Office to implement. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-254 of Municipality Palapag Northern Samar, entitled an ordinance strictly implementing the allowable speed limit in all barangays within the jurisdictions of Municipality Palapag Northern Samar, as said forth in Republic Act Number 4136. We, upon the recommendation of majority of the committee chaired by this humble representation, I move for the passing and adoption of the committee report and declaring that the ordinance valid and operative or to be inconsistent with the general welfare of the provisions of Local Government Code of 1991. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, do this counted to pass a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-254 of the Municipality Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative, provided however that its implementations have been in accordance with existing laws, rules, and regulations, particularly, particularly the rules and regulations which are under the authority of the LTO to implement. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Quintín B. Saludaga.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the rules of Sanggunian Pandalawigan.
With that motion, internal is suspended.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-253 of the Municipality of Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative. Valid and operative, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, do this counted for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-253 of the Municipality Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-254 of the Municipality of Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative, subject to some conditions. So move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion, do this counted for the approval and final reading of a resolution declaring Municipal Ordinance Number 2024-11-254 of the Municipality Palapag Northern Samar valid and operative, subject to some conditions. Hearing objections, this motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, no member who signify to make use of the privileged question hour. Under Item Number 10, Other Matters, Letter A, kindly direct the secretary to read the certified urgent letter of the Honorable Governor.
S. Secretary, kindly read the letter of urgency coming from the Honorable Governor Edwin Marino Sion.
Office of the Governor, December 3, 2024, the Honorable Attorney Clarence Zidato, the Presiding Officer and Vice Governor and the members of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan Province of Northern Samar. Dear Vice Governor Dato and the ladies and gentlemen of the Sanggunian, I hereby certify the urgency of passing a resolution approving the Northern Samar Provincial Agriculture and Fishery Modernization Plan 2024 to 2030, PAFM, PLAN 30, and adapting the same to the Food Security and Sustainable Economic Development Initiatives of the Provincial Government of Northern Samar. Attach as a copy of the PAFM, PLAN 30 for your reference. Thank you for your immediate legislative action. Signed, Edwin Marino Sion, Tuan, Governors.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, considering that Dr. Londo Akompanyado, who is our Provincial Agriculture Office, OIC, cannot appear in our session, I move, Mr. Chair, that we consider the letter of urgency of the Honorable Governor Edwin Marino Sion to our, that we consider this letter of urgency on our next session. I so move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, do this counted the consideration of the letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor of passing a resolution approving the Northern Samar Provincial Agriculture and Fishery Modernization Plan 2024 to 2020 is hereby deferred toward, until our next, uh, scheduled session.
Mr. Chair, I move for a few minutes of suspension.
Session suspended.
This is the item. Ready to resume, Mr. Chair.
Session resumes.
Mr. Chairman, under Item Letter B of Other Matters, Sir Chair, I move to dispense with the reading of all the items and that this be considered as incorporated in our journal of the, of our journal, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, do this counted the reading of the items under Letter B, Number 10, Other Matters, the 14 items under Letter B, Other Matters, hereby, uh, dispense with and the same. These items be incorporated in the journal of today's regular session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, uh, last July 31, 2024, August 9, 2024, August 15, 2024, and August 20, 2024, the Sanggunian Pandalawigan constituted as the Committee of the Whole has conducted an investigation into the operations of the Provincial Human Resource Management and Development Office on the alleged delay in the publication posting of certain job vacancies in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar. And during those four sessions, Mr. Chair, other relevant issues were also likewise found out, particularly the policy guidelines pertaining to denomination forms required by the PHR MDO, particularly by its head, Attorney Rosa Leya Tipasi Estudilio, and also on the alleged involvement of the PHR MDO, particularly by its head, Attorney Rosa Leya Tipasi Estudilio in the formation of the public sector organizations or employees' union in the provincial government on Nor, of Northern Samar. And during those sessions, Mr. Chair, there was also an observation of the improper decorum and demeanor exhibited by the PHR MDO head, Attorney Rosa Leya Tipasi Estudilio during the Sanggunian Pandalawigan sessions. During the Sanggunian Pandalawigan sessions, Mr. Chair. This committee report, Mr. Chair, was, was already furnished to all the members of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan. In fact, Mr. Chair, all the members of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan constituted as Committee of the Whole has already affixed their signature of this committee, committee report. Mr. Chair, this committee report is for the adoption of the body. Before I move for the adoption of the committee report, Mr. Chair, I move for the suspension of the rules of the Sanggunian Pandalawigan.
With that motion, internal is suspended.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With that, Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report of the Committee of the Whole on the investigation of the operations of the Provincial Human Resource Management Development Office as stated by this presentation earlier. I so move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion, the Committee of the Whole report on the operations of the Provincial Human Resource Management and Development Office, PHR MDO, which primarily, uh, the Committee of the Whole investigated alleged delay in the publication posting of certain job vacancies in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar. And in the course of the, uh, examination of those allegations during the three sess, uh, during the sessions of July 31, 2024, August 9, 2024, August 15, 2024, and August 20, 2024, other relevant issues also were, uh, found, among others, the alleged involvement of the PHR MDO, particularly in said Attorney Rosa Leya Tipasi Estudilio in the formation of the public sector organization or employees' union in the provincial government of Northern Samar. The said committee report, the Committee of the Whole is hereby, the hearing objection is hereby... Hearing objection is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, still under other matters, kindly recognize the Honorable Don El Abalon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have some questions, Mr. Chair, that I would like to address to the Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service with the indulgence of the Chairman. I understand, Mr. Chair, that the provincial government, we have our learning and development manual that was last updated way back in 2018. May I ask from the Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, Mr. Chair, if he knows of, he knew of any updating recently? Because that manual would have been valid and good for a period of five years and that would have needed a revisit, a revision, or an updating as early as 2023.
The Honorable Victoria M. Sixon the Second is...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, upon the inquiry of our good colleague, Honorable Abalon, I believe, Mr. Chairman, that the... Although I have no records pertaining to the Office of the Provincial Human Resource Management, I believe it is just proper and fitting that we will... To invite the, our HR officer under the next session in order to be clarified whether or not the, our Provincial Human Resource Management Officer had already complied with the requirements to concerning the submission of the Provincial Government of Northern Samar Learning and Development Manual. If the good gentleman, our good colleague, Honorable Abalon, will consider inviting the, our Provincial Human Resource Officer until the next session, if available, Mr. Chairman.
I yield to the manifestation of the Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, Mr. Chair, and maybe we can be clarified further regarding the provincial learning and development manual with the presence of the provincial human resource and development management officer. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. If I may add, if my recollection serves me right, goes also about this Learning and Development Manual, 2018, in one of our cluster meetings, it was then presented, among others, among other topics now by our provincial administrator about the Learning and Development Manual. So with that, if we, if the, this august body, we are in... Our consensus is to be, in order for us to be clarified about the status of this 2018 Learning Manual, we'll invite the first person from the PHR MDO, particularly the head of the Office, in our next session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon. Thank you, Honorable Victoria M. Sixon the Second.
With that, Mr. Chair, with the inquiry of the Honorable Abalon and also with the answer of the Chairman of the Committee on Civil Service, I move that we invite Attorney Lea Rosa Tipase Estudilio, together with the 2018 Learning Manual.
Learning and Development Manual.
Learning and Development Manual during, on, in our scheduled next session. I so move, Mr. Chair.
With that motion duly seconded, let an invitation be sent, S. Secretary, to the Office of the Provincial Human Resource Management Development Office, particularly its head, to appear in our next scheduled session for to clarify on the Learning and Development Manual dated 2018, year 2018.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chairman, there are still other items under other matters with the secretary, kindly direct the secretary to read four items, four letter of urgency of the Honorable Governor.
S. Secretary kindly read those letters, letters of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Mr. Chair, there are five letters of urgency.
Five letters of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, December 18, 2024, the Presiding Officer and the members of the Sangunyang Pandalawigan, Province of Northern Samar. Dear Vice Governor Dato and the ladies and gentlemen of the Sangunyang, I hereby certify the urgency of passing an ordinance reverting savings from personal services, CY 2024, in the amount of 30,760,000 pesos and re-appropriating the same. Sources of funds, savings from personal services, CY 2024, 30,760,000 pesos. Total sources of funds, 30,760,000 pesos. Uses of funds, other personal benefits, service recognition incentive, SRI, pursuant to administrative order number 27, series of 2024, dated December 12, 2024, 30,760,000 pesos. Total uses of funds, 30,760,000 pesos. Attached is the certificate of availability of funds for your reference and guidance. Thank you for your prompt legislative action. Signed, Edwin Marino Siomchuwan, Governor.
Thank you, S. Secretary, Major Dele.
Mr. Chair, in response to the certified urgent letter of the Governor, kindly recognize the Honorable Don Abalon.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With the letter of the Governor, the Honorable Governor Edwin Marino Siomchuwan, dated December 18, which certify the urgency of the passing of an ordinance, may I move for the enactment of an ordinance reverting the amount of 30,760,000 pesos to the general fund to be taken from savings from personal services for calendar year 2024 and re-appropriating the same as and for other personal benefits, service recognition incentive, SRI, pursuant to administrative order number 27, series of 2024, dated December 12, 2024, and for other purposes. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion duly seconded for the enactment of an ordinance reverting savings from personal services calendar year 2024 in the amount of 30,760,000 pesos and re-appropriating the same. Sources of funds, savings from personal services calendar year 2024 in the amount of 30,760,000 pesos. Total sources of funds, 30,760,000 pesos. Uses of funds, other personal benefits, service recognition incentive, SRI, administrative, pursuant administrative order number 27, series of 2024, from the Office of the President, dated December 12, 2024. The amount is 30,760,000 pesos. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, there is still another...
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon.
Another item with the secretary.
S. Secretary kindly read another letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, December 18, 2024, the Presiding Officer and the members of the Sangunyang Pandalawigan, Province of Northern Samar. Dear Vice Governor Dato and the ladies and gentlemen of the Sangunyang, I hereby certify the urgency of passing an ordinance reverting savings from personal services, CY 2024, in the amount of 90,972,547 pesos to the general fund and re-appropriating the same. Sources of funds, savings from personal services, CY 2024, 90,972,547 pesos. Total sources of funds, 90,972,547 pesos. Uses of funds, 23,644,722 pesos and 45 centavos. PS, other personal benefits, loyalty pay, 15 million. MOE, gratuity pay, 30 million. Other professional services, 13,827,824 pesos and 55 centavos. Other general services, 32,144,722 pesos and 45 centavos. Total uses of funds, 90,972,547 pesos. Attached is the certificate of availability of funds for your reference and guidance. Thank you for your prompt legislative action. Signed, Edwin Marino Siomchuwan, Governor.
Mr. Chair, kindly recognize Honorable Don El Abalon.
Honorable Don El Abalon is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With reference to the letter dated December 18, 2024, of the Honorable Governor, Governor Edwin Marino Siomchuwan, which certify as urgent the passing of an ordinance reverting the savings from personal services for calendar year 2024 in the amount of 90,972,547 pesos to the general fund and to reappropriate the same for certain purposes, may I move for the enactment of an ordinance reverting the amount of 90,972,547 pesos to the general fund, taken from the savings from personal services calendar year 2024, and re-appropriating the same for the following purposes. Personal services, other personal benefits, loyalty pay in the amount of 15 million, and for MOE, gratuity pay in the amount of 30 million. Other professional services in the amount of 13,827,824 pesos and 55 centavos. And other general services in the amount of 32,144,722 pesos and 45 centavos for the total amount of 90,972,547 pesos. Subject however to the provision that the grant and effectivity of the gratuity pay shall be subject to the appropriate issuances from the Office of the President. I so move, Mr. Chair.
There's a motion duly seconded for an enactment of an ordinance reverting savings from personal services calendar year 2024 in the amount of 90,972,547 pesos to the general fund and re-appropriating the same to the following uses of funds. Personal services, other personal benefits, loyalty pay in the amount of 15 million pesos. Gratuity pay in the amount of 30 million pesos. Other professional services in the amount of 13,827,824.55 pesos. Other general services in the amount of 32,144,722 pesos and 45 centavos, provided that the grant of gratuity pay subject to the issuances coming from the Office of the President. Hearing no objection, other comments? This motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Don El Abalon.
Sir Chair, one more item with the secretary.
S. Secretary kindly read another letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, December 17, 2024, the Honorable Vice Governor Clarence E. Dato, Presiding Officer, and the members of the Sangunyang Pandalawigan of this province. Dear by, dear Presiding Officer and gentlemen and ladies of the Sangunyang, I hereby certify the urgency of passing an ordinance retiting the following items from Office ADH, item number ADH 52-11, position title Administrative Officer 4, Salary Grade 15. Office PTO, item number PTO 77, position title Local Revenue Collection Officer 4, Salary Grade 22. Two, Office PDEPO, position title Project Development Officer 2, Salary Grade 15. PTO, position title Supervising Tourism Operations Officer, Salary Grade 22. Attached are certifications from the Provincial Human Resource Management and Development Office, PHR MDO, and the Provincial Budget Office, PBO, for your information and reference. Thank you for your immediate legislative action, very thoroughly yours, signed, Edwin Marino Siomchuwan, Governor.
Thank you, S. Secretary, Major Dele. Mr. Chair, move for a few minutes of suspension.
To Project Development Officer 2, from the Office of the Provincial Economic Development and Investment Promotion Office, Salary Grade 15, and Supervising Tourism Officer from the Office of the Provincial Tourism Office, Salary Grade 22. Sumo for the approval, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion duly seconded for the enactment of an ordinance retiting the following items. Item number ADH 52-11, from Allen District Hospital, the position of Administrative Officer 4, Salary Grade 15, and Provincial... Treasurers Office, item number PTO 77, with the position of Local Revenue Collection Officer IV, with Salary Grade 22. Two. The Office of PDEPO, with the position of, position title of Project Development Officer II, Salary Grade 15, and to the Office of the Provincial Tourism, ah, Provincial Tourism, Provincial Tourism Office, with the position of Supervising Tourism Operations Officer, Salary Grade 22. With that, uh, motion and hearing objection, the said motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, another item, there is still another item with the secretary.
S.P. Secretary, kindly read another letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, December 17, 2024. The Honorable Attorney Clarence E. Dato, Presiding Officer and Vice Governor, and the Members of the Sangguniang Palalawigan, Province of Northern Samar. Dear Vice Governor Dato and the ladies and gentlemen of the Sangguniang, I hereby certify the urgency of passing a resolution authorizing the Governor to enter into memorandum of agreement, understanding and/or contracts with nursing schools in connection with the Nursing Scholarship Program of the Province. Thank you for your immediate legislative action. Signed, Edwin Marino Siung Chuwan, Governor.
Thank you, S.P. Secretary, Majority Leader.
Mr. Chairman, kindly recognize the Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon.
Honorable Gilbert F. Lyons recognized.
Thank you, Mrs. Chairman. The, uh, for the information of my dear colleagues. The Nursing Scholarship Program or to the Nursing Scholarship Board in the Technical Working Group of the Provincial Government of Northern Samar, Nursing Scholarship Program has already accepted application for the said scholarship program, and in the process of accepting and eliminating those who are not qualified and accept those who are indigent and qualified students, and to finally grant scholarship to those applicants. With this, Mr. Chairman, the Governor needs to enter into memorandum of agreement to the different colleges who our scholars will be enrolling. With that, with the letter of urgency from the Office of the Governor, Mr. Chairman, I move that we pass a resolution authorizing the Honorable Governor for and in behalf of the Province of Northern Samar, Provincial Government of Northern Samar, to enter into memorandum of agreement, understanding and/or contracts with nursing schools pertaining to the Nursing Scholarship Program of the Province. I sumo, Mrs. Chair.
There's a motion duly seconded to pass a resolution authorizing the Governor to enter into memorandum of agreement or memorandum of understanding and/or contracts with nursing schools in connection with the Nursing Scholarship Program of the Province. Hearing objections and motions is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Honorable Gilbert F. Lyon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, one last item with the secretary.
S.P. Secretary, kindly read the last letter of urgency coming from the Office of the Governor.
Office of the Governor, December 17, 2024. The Honorable Vice Governor Clarence E. Dato, Presiding Officer and Members of the Sangguniang Palalawigan, this province. Dear Presiding Officer and gentlemen and ladies of the Sangguniang, I hereby certify the urgency of passing an ordinance for the conversion of the following items from Office PTO, item number PTO 13-11. Position title: Supervising Administrative Officer, Casualty Four, Salary Grade 22. Two. Office PEO, position title: Two Engineer I, Salary Grade 12. Attached are certifications from the Provincial Human Resource Management and Development Office PHRMDO and the Provincial Budget Office PBO for your information and reference. Thank you for your immediate legislative action, very truly yours. Signed, Edwin Marino Siung Chuwan, Governor.
Thank you, S.P. Secretary, Majority Leader.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, uh, for the last letter certified as urgent coming from the Provincial Governor, uh, for the Sangguniang Palalawigan to consider pass, passing an ordinance for the conversion of a certain items uh, from the Office of the Provincial, Provincial Treasurers Office to the Office of Provincial Engineering Office, as stated in the letter and read by the secretary. And with this, Mr. Chairman, I therefore, I now therefore move for the passage of an ordinance for the conversion of item from the Provincial Treasurers Office, number 13-11, Supervising Administrative Casualty Four, with Salary Grade 22, to to the Office, to the Provincial Engineering Office, uh, Engineer One. Uh, two items, uh, uh, close and open and close parentheses, uh, Two Engineer One, with Salary Grade 12. Mr. Chairman, uh, sumo per approval, uh, sumo for the passage of, of the ordinance uh, straight by this humble presentation. Sumo, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion duly seconded for the enactment of an ordinance for the conversion of the following item from the Office of the, uh, Provincial Treasurer. Item number PTO 13-11, with the position of Supervising Administrative Officer, Casualty Four, Salary Grade 22, to the Office of the, uh, PEO, Provincial Engineering Office, with the position title of Engineer One, uh, item, two items, Salary Grade 12. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chair, I move for a few minutes suspension.
Session suspended. Mr. Chairman, I have to reiterate my motion. I move to approve on second reading. An ordinance institutionalizing the mental health care services in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar. So, we terminate the another debate, period of debate, interpolation.
No, we will just continue the consideration under second reading. And if there are no discussion and there are no amendments, then we will proceed with the approval under second reading.
Okay. We treat this under second reading?
Yes.
Without motion and hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Mr. Chairman, there being no member wishes to interpolate and no member wishes to introduce an amendments, I move, Mr. Chair, that we terminate the period of amendments and terminate the period of discussion. So move, Mr. Chair.
Without motion, period of amendments is hereby terminated.
Mr. Chairman, approval of the ordinance under second reading is now in order.
Mr. Chairman, I have to reiterate my motion. I move to approve on second reading. An ordinance institutionalizing the mental health care services in the Provincial Government of Northern Samar, establishing mechanism and guidelines for its implementation, adapting certain provision of Republic Act eleven zero thirty-six, appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. I sum up, Mrs. Chair.
Session suspended.
Yeah, second reading, approval for the second reading.
Without motion, the proposed ordinance, hearing objection, proposed ordinance is approved on second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, again earlier, the ordinance sponsored by the Honorable Lucero on ordinance regulating the use, sale, distribution and advertisement of cigarettes and other tobacco products, electronic nicotine and non-nicotine delivery systems, heated tobacco products and other novel tobacco products in certain places imposing penalties for violations thereof and providing funds therefore to instill health consciousness and for other purposes. Mr. Chair, the consideration of this proposed ordinance was deferred and again considering that there is a need for us to immediately to expedite the approval of this ordinance, I move that we continue to consider this under other matters, under second reading. And therefore move, Mr. Chair, that we suspend the rules of the Sangguniang Palawigan.
Without motion due this content, term is suspended.
Kindly recognize, Mr. Chair, the sponsor, the Honorable Lucero.
Honorable Albert A. Lucero's recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve on third, second reading. I move that we terminate the period of amendment and and discussion of the of the ordinance entitled Ordinance Regulating the Use, Sale, Distribution and Advertisement of Cigarettes and Other Tobacco Products, Electronic Nicotine and Non-Nicotine Delivery Systems, Heated Tobacco Products and Other Novel Tobacco Products in Certain Places Imposing Penalties for Violations Thereof and Providing Funds Therefore to Instill Health Consciousness and for Other Purposes. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion due this content for the termination of period of amendments and/or discussion. Hearing objection, for this proposed ordinance as read by the opponent. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I therefore move that we pass, we approve on second reading the said ordinance. So move, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion due this content for the approval on second reading of the proposed ordinance regulating among others the use, sale, distribution and advertisement of cigarettes and other tobacco products. Hearing objection, said motion is hereby approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I therefore move that we approve on third and final reading. An ordinance regulating the use, sale, distribution. Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the ruling.
Thank you, Honorable Albert A. Lucero.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I I move, Mr. Chair, for the adjournment of our session until Monday, December twenty-three, at the Sangguniang Palawigan Session Hall. So move, Mr. Chair.
Without motion, today's regular session is hereby adjourned until December twenty-three, twenty twenty-four.